Disappointing, but anyway, we shall move on. I am calling the meeting to order at seven oh three, I think. And I'm gonna ask you all to stand and join me as I recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns absent with notice. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones running late. And trustee Sterling is also running late. Trustee, she did call trustee, um, trusty Johnson. Is anybody here, trustee Jones? Oh, okay. Um, trustee Seth?
Here.
And trustee Draper.
Here.
May I ask Pastor Gibbs of Holy Grails Tabernacle to please come and lead us with the meditation.
Testing, one, two, three. Please, if we can all stand for prayer. Let us bow our heads. Lord, you know us intimately. May we yield our hearts to this loving relationship and find ways to serve you and your people. May we never be fearful, but let us always be faithful to one another, that we do the business at hand in what you have provided for us and has allowed us to be here another day. Lord, look upon each and everyone that is in this building. Bless what is gonna be seen, that it will be nourishment to the body of Christ and Salt Village. Bless each and everyone that is under the sound of our voice. Lord, that you get the glory out of what we do. May we pray in the name of Jesus, who is faithful unto death to each and every one of us. This is my loving prayer. I will pray it in the name of Jesus. Thank God, amen. God bless you, Savior.
May I ask for a motion to recess to closed session to discuss personnel matters and/or employment and compensation that's needed, update pending litigation, and to review executive board minutes. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, trustee Winston. Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns absent with notice. Trustee Jones not here at the moment. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
Here.
Trustee Sterling?
Right.
And trustee Winston?
Here.
It's yes.
Yes.
That motion, that motion carries. Everyone, please excuse us as we go to executive closed session. We'll be back as soon as we can. Well, we thank you for waiting. Sorry that we took as long as we did. But it's time, have you noticed that the agenda has changed just a little bit? We moved our number three up, which is public comment. Usually it was after the minute. So I'm going to ask that we start preparing to come forward. And then, there's a couple of other changes to the agenda. I will be asking that we strike items seven E and F. May I have a motion for that? To strike seven E and F from the. I'd like to call them, you got that order?
Uh, trustee, um, Burns absent with notice. Trustee Jones?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We need a motion.
So moved.
You don't believe you don't. Call the row. Usually when you, when you reconvene, you just call the row. You don't do that. But that's okay. That's okay. It should be flexible.
Trustee Burns absent with notice. Trustee Jones? Trustee Johnson?
Yeah.
Trustee Seth? Trustee Sterling?
Right.
And trustee Draper.
Here.
Thank you. May I have a motion to remove items seven E and F? May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, can someone raise your hand?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved by trustee Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to ask also for a motion to remove items five C, items one and two. May I have that motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Moving on now to public comment. With public comment, as I was saying, has been moved up. And all questions and comments must be directed to me. Each speaker may commit on any matter concerning the business of Salt Village. You will be allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. You may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I'm going to ask that you refrain from personalizing any of your comments to anyone. And I will respond to questions and comments as appropriate. If I do not have the answer or am unable to answer, then I will refer it to the particular department who can come back and respond at a different time. I'm going to ask each person who intends to speak to get in line. First person, walk up to the mic now. And the rest be prepared to walk up to the mic as soon as that person is, is finished. Does anyone else feel that they need to have public comment? Hearing none, then the person that has the mask on at the very end of that line will be the last public comment that will be accepted this evening. Maybe turn on the light, maybe?
Did you hear me?
No.
Turn the switch up. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
I reset your time.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, Ms. Mayor. I just have, have a question. I noticed that the.
What's your name?
Ernestine Blackman, I'm sorry. I noticed that some of the trustees presented their report. There were two that did not present their report. And I'm just wondering why their report was not presented. Thank you.
Are you talking about from IML?
Yes.
From the meeting?
IML, the conference?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I can't say why they did not present it. I'm hoping that those that did not would possibly hear your interest and when they come for you again, that they will do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Sharon Abbott. So I've been out here twenty years, every administration. I, I come and whine about this tree in my house that I, in front of my house. And I'm trying to get, get taken down and stuff for the beautification. So I'm so grateful for, I, I had a chance to talk to, um, Melanie, and she here. And I've actually taken pictures. They did start the work of the sidewalk. So I've given her, um, some photos that I took, a little video clip. And you can see all of the thick woods. And they had to work hard on one in front of my house to try to break it up. That's actually coming, messing up my plumbing and messing up my yard. So now I actually have proof that I told you I live with a problem. But I wanted to say, um, so she, you know, she'll look into it. That's fine, the tree falling apart is gonna dig the ground. But I want to, um, there were yellow notices put out for each home to let us know no parking on the twenty seventh through the first. But it just told them no parking. It wasn't even to tell them, y'all, we're stuck in the driveway.
Say what?
That you're gonna be stuck in your driveway. That it's gonna be blocked off, which I do have pictures of that. So what I did was, um, I went to as many neighbors as possible, called my neighbors. Hey, move your cars before they start, 'cause you won't. And I let them know. Um, and then on the, um, neighborhood ring, somebody said something. So I explained it on there that, yes, this is not something that just happened. It was announced. It was at a board meeting, so it's not something, uh. So I just wanted, you guys know that because across the street is gonna go through the same process. They need to know what day to get their cars out of the driveway so that they're not stuck. And so the people on my side now has to park on the wrong side of the street. So I went, I was hoping to make sure that the police don't get in the ticket. They're parked on the wrong side of the street. So far, so good, cross fingers crossed. So I wanted to bring that up. In addition, I'm grateful. Originally, it was announced it was gonna be ten days. They started, today's Tuesday, yesterday. And they are already starting to lay the foundation. They are doing an excellent job. It's looking good already, and I'm excited. A long time coming. So I wanted to compliment you all and thank you all for allowing this to happen. Especially without the fifty-fifty sidewalk program. It was something that was able to be granted where people, you could help the households of those who couldn't afford to do the fifty-fifty program. So I thought it was very, very excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Fields, resident. Madam Mayor, I asked last week about this very thing, about our time. The amount of time that this is gonna be in these meetings for all of this stuff that you're putting on, these agendas. I ask you then, if you can please be conscious of people's time. Y'all people here, they get up early in the morning, wanna work. We're sitting up here ten, eleven, eleven thirty at night for these meetings that's going on. Up in the sack, you wanna put all of this stuff on these agendas, you know? I ask you then, if you consider, please cut down your agendas. Because it's a lot of this stuff, it's stuff that's already been voted on and it's coming back up again. And I don't feel that you just do respect me and trustees. Once they say, once they vote on something, why is it that you're bringing this stuff back up again for another vote when it had already voted on? That's just using our time. Also, I would like to know, as far as the former Public Works Directive, as it was said, he was supposed to be of other investigation. And the investigation was supposed to have been taking place already, which was almost four months ago. There was no, up to my knowledge, there was, as he stated, there was nothing investigation did. And if so, who did the investigation and when did it take place? But I noticed that you have, have got on your nap, on the agenda, that there is a Public Works Directive. And I would like to know, how could you possibly have a Public Works Directive? And you didn't write the formal Public Works Directive? It's just too much underhanded stuff going on. And Mayor, you're the center of it. You're causing more problems in this village than this village needs. And every time we turn around, it's something going on underhand. And it's just a matter of time. It's just like the house of cards. It's gonna come, come down. And when you calm down, calm down, it's gonna come down, down, down.
Okay, sir, I don't respond to you very often, you know that. But I'm gonna take an opportunity to respond to you now. Because you do have your agenda, right?
Excuse me?
I'm going, you have your agenda? You read the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you look on that agenda? And can you tell me one thing that's on that agenda that's been on the agenda before where you specifically state that I'm not respecting the trustees when they voted already? What on the agenda has already been voted on?
Number five, item C. One and two, this certification of this consensus vote, you can't own. Back in July, this was voted on. It was voted down.
Sir.
And here it is.
Okay, we did say no counter appoint, no counter. But sir, I, I, I think that maybe you're talking about something different. That was another consensus vote, not this one here. The information that is on two is the very first time that it hit, and that was last week, so.
Oh, no, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. So now you may be seated. Thank you.
Oh, no, Madam Mayor. You asked, you asked.
People say that I'm condescending. I'm being condescending right now. I'm asking you to take your seats, sir. Thank you.
David Smith, resident. Let me know you're ready. All right. First, um, something that was on account, something that is on accounts payable was voted on, on July twenty second at the board meeting. And that was the IT proposal for Altech Digital Solutions. So my first question is, the board voted that down on July twenty second by a three to two vote. Why are they now being, are they showing up on our accounts payable to do IT work? The board didn't approve. They voted it down.
Who did you think?
Second, why is Altech Digital Solutions performing any installation for Zero Outages when that company or that proposal has not been approved by the board? You just spoke yourself and said, last week, it was a consensus that was taken. And to my recollection, the board was not, they didn't agree on that. Several issues were pointed out with the service level agreement from Zero Outages last week. It was supposed to have went back to our attorneys. And matter of fact, it was supposed to be resubmitted back to Zero Outages to see if they could make the necessary changes. So why would we be on the accounts payable for installing their equipment? Once we install their equipment, that leads me to believe that we've already agreed to this service agreement. And my question is, getting through all of that, have you already agreed to this service agreement? Have you bypassed the board to make a unilateral decision to contract Zero Outages? And if so, why? Picking back off what Mr. Fields said, why do you seem to always unilaterally make these decisions to bypass the board? They already said they don't want Altech Digital Solutions. It's another company, and I spoke on it during public comment on July twenty second. You can check the minutes. I said that there, and I'm gonna say again. That company was ran by a previous IT provider for the village. And all he did was switch the company name. His services were bad then, and I would assume they'll be bad now. This is why we have checks and balances. And it just seems like you're trying to override it. So right now, my questions are, why is Altech Digital Solutions on accounts payable when that contract for the equipment that they're installing has not been approved by the board? Look at the date on the invoice. It was dated before even last week's meeting. When was this agreement? When did, when did the equipment get installed? Or has it already been installed? And why is Zero Outages being forced upon us when the board obviously didn't approve it?
Good question.
Thank you, sir.
Good question.
You have an answer, because you just said point of information.
As far as part of this comment, I would like you to answer it so I can get that clarification.
That's how you do that, okay? Just like, just point of information.
Just waiting for your acknowledgement.
Excuse me?
I'm speaking up.
Excuse me?
You called for point of information. And you must acknowledge your point of information.
I asked her what it was.
That's what it is, I confused that.
Good question. Waiting for an answer.
Let me say something. Trustees and to our public. This is not a show. This is not a show. Just as you say, that I can't dictate and I shouldn't, neither should you. What's good for you, what's not good for me is not good or acceptable by you either. You want respect? You must give respect. And I'm all willing to give respect. But this entire process has to be respected if we're going to proceed on. And that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. I'm going to ask, I'm not certain if I should ask Mr. Finch or our village clerk to respond to the consensus vote that I clearly stated when I first came back out here. When we first came back out here, we asked to amend the agenda to remove those items off of the agenda. I asked us to amend it. Trustees voted to remove them from the agenda. So I'm asking that rather than, I'm coming at you, baby, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming. Okay, but I got to say this. Okay? Rather than study to see what you can find wrong, why not listen to the proceedings that's taking place up here so that you won't ask questions that's already been answered for you? It's been removed from the agenda. Now, I'm going back to the item that I asked to be taken off of the agenda, which is certifying the trustees consensus vote for the installation of the Zero Outage Switch. We took it off of the agenda. But now, between the village clerk and the village administrator, I'm going to ask either one of them to respond what happened when you took that consensus vote. Because I never got the actual vote. I know I used to provide the vote.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. But he's not talking about the consensus vote. He's talking about the accounts payable. That's what your decision to help him to vote.
Yes.
I probably did hear a little loud, and I'm pretty sure that I'm gonna have to.
Okay, I understand. But what he was talking about, what he was asking about, what was on the accounts payable? It's relative. No. It's dealing with the consensus vote for Zero Outage. That was, they're one, they're, they're grouped together. So that's what come, I'm asking one of them to talk about the consensus vote and what was put out there. It's about, it's the same company, okay? Okay? It's the same company. I mean, the company that's ref, that's being referenced in the accounts payable, it was to get that switch connected. That's why I went back to it. Which one of you two will respond?
I can, I can speak on it, Mayor. So the consensus vote as of Friday was three yay to approve Altech to do the switch.
Sorry?
Didn't you ever vote on that one yet? Didn't you also vote on that one?
Generally, when it's a consensus vote, it's a tie. But was it a tie?
No, because didn't we talk about this earlier?
We didn't get any, that I know of, any vote. Right, so we got three yes. There's, we did not get no consensus no vote.
I've never got. No, I never got.
So what I'm saying, there was three yes and no other votes.
Three guesses and three no vote votes. And three is free.
Words were free to the evening.
Mayor was requesting the items she was wanting basically.
To be for Friday.
That she was asking for. Even though I didn't get an email from her, she was asking for the consensus.
I guess we're told to be in conference.
So it's the majority to install the installation.
I just wanted to correct it, it wasn't a three to.
But even though it was stated last week that this is a crucial switch. So to answer the question, I'm gonna read from the financial policy that was finally approved after like four or five years. All the trustees should have it. But in the financial policy, under manual checks, they give an example of when manual checks can be issued. And it says, situations which will significantly impair the village operation if the check is not prepared. I don't know any resident that can constantly and honestly say if your police department internet goes down and they can't fingerprint prisoners, they can't do a line scan or anything like that. That's not something that significantly impact. they can't do a line scan or anything like that, that's not something that significantly impact the village. So then it goes on to say, this request must be approved by the mayor and financial, finance director. So it was a situation that the attempt was to bring it to the trustee. The conversation was a little, um, unwrittenness. But the installation of the switch is separate from the agreement. I tried to explain that last week, but oftentimes, if your mind is made up, that is no, is no. The decision was made, and I think rightfully so, that the mayor, the finance director, or myself, police chief, fire chief, cannot afford for the residents to be at risk. Just this afternoon, the person in the police department was typing in information that she has to take to Markham Courthouse. And in the middle of that, it crashed. Believe it or not, them Georgia judges and lawyers are not going to care if the village has internet or not. So I'm thankful that the decision was made because we have enough lawsuits. And we don't need one because a prisoner is in our jail cell and we say we can't watch them on camera, or we can't do a background check because we don't have internet. So yes, Altech is on the accounts payable. And I, and I will phrase this and then I'll be done. When we have a water main break at nine o'clock at night, we do not go get bids for Kyleman Plumbing, M&amp;J, Sunset. We call whoever can come out and fix the situation. That's what this is about. We've tried to reach out to Heritage because Heritage did not get paid in 2024. They will not touch the village unless we pay them in advance. Proven IT, which have to do our company, will not touch the village unless they get a contract. As you guys know and see for the last few months, we have a difficult time getting a contract. Finally, this was not the first time this situation has been discussed, as I said last year. This by voting to pay sixty-four thousand dollars. Check the enforcers, check the minutes, to do the exact same thing that this sixteen hundred dollars would do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's go back to what you probably commented.
I'm Francine Anderson, and I have several questions, uh, and comments. But I will start first of all with my questions instead of comments. First of all, I am looking, thank you for having the accounts payable in the back. I want to get an understanding from you, mayor. How is it that these add-ons, it's a manual adjustments to accounts payable for October twenty-fourth? These are basic things that we pay ongoingly. So I don't know why it's been added after last year. Maybe you can answer that for me. But this one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and eighty-two cents is, it says add. We are definitely paying that class, we definitely paying seven, we definitely paying first insurance, we definitely paying rep. Matter of fact, we got a thirty-year contract with rep. And then we definitely paying Robertson, they've been around here forever. So how is that added on? I don't understand why it's not a part of our, um, our payment report. That's one question for me. Uh, I wanted to have a compliment to say I am glad that we finally put our village administrator back into his regular term. Last week, he was village administrator and not interim, um, village administrator. So I'm glad to see that it's back. Um, because right now, hmm, we had some people on there, we did remove them. You had a new finance department, you had a new public works person that you removed. So my question is, are we going to have new people? Because you got new directors and they were here today, sitting in seats. Or is it the fact that are we finished with what you need to do to employ these people? And are they going to be employed with over a hundred thousand dollars as you have with all the other directors of self-recover enforcement? Another question. I continue to read the newspaper, and I had asked at the last meeting, you preach a lot about unity, and for this community to be unified. But still, I read in the South Suburban News that you have not made an amendment with the village clerk about some records. So if we are to be unified, can you find a solution to that problem? And I totally understand that you understand the importance of those records because you just relinquished that position back to the person who supported for you. So I don't understand the confusion about the records at all. And you just sit here and say, in order for a person to get respect from you, it needs to be given. You did not give it today to those people who sit here with their public comments. And you said you were going to be kind of saying, you were kind of saying.
Time, I'm going to answer one of your questions with the hopes that it will make a little sense to you.
Don't get, I forgot my, uh.
On the accounts payable, it had add-ons. If you can remember, at the last board meeting, accounts payable was not approved. So everything that was on that accounts payable came back again on this accounts payable. The add-ons are those items that was not on the previous board accounts payable. That's what made them add-ons. Thank you. Uh, let's move on. I'm looking at approval of minutes. I'm sorry, uh, can you handle that as you normally do? I'm sorry.
Mayor and Board, I'm asking to remove items A, B, and D until another time. And we will be approving tonight the Journal of Proceedings for the Special Board Meeting for September twenty-third, seven PM meeting, and the Journal of Proceedings for the Committee of the Whole Meeting of October seventh. Just those two for tonight.
Would you like those by coming and, um?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. May I have a motion to remove, did you? May I have a motion to approve the Journal of Proceedings for the Special Board Meeting for September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and the whole meeting for October the seventh, twenty twenty-five? Or is there a trustee who feel that either one of them needs to be removed? Not hearing no one say that, then may I answer it? Can you please talk until the night? I have a motion to approve the Journal of Proceedings for the Special Board Meeting of September the twenty-third and the Committee of the Whole Meeting of October the seventh. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um. Can you please call the roll?
Yes, uh, trustee Burns, absent of notice, trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Going on to new business financial matters. May I have a motion to approve transfers, payrolls, accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, and to authorize the finance department to remit payment. Submove it. I have a motion on the floor, who made that motion? Trustee Seth, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, Dr. Winston, are there any questions or comments? Trustee Sterling.
I wanted to, uh, Mary, I want to make a motion to amend this accounts payable. By removing my item, the invoice number A is an apple, D is a dog, S is Sam, two oh two, five one, eight three one. Also, uh, an amount of eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred?
Yes. Also invoice number A is an apple, D is a dog, S is Sam, two oh two, five one, eight three. It had one, but I believe it should be two. An amount of eight hundred, total of sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, that made the accounts payable totally, currently stands at six hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. With the amendment, well, the total would be six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Look, give me a minute. Let's do it this way, okay? Let's first vote on your amendment. So you had two amendments, did you say both of them were eight hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be sixteen hundred.
That is correct.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to amend the accounts payable by removing sixteen hundred dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we remove the two items, eight hundred each, for a total of sixteen hundred dollars. Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent of notice, trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seth.
No.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Upstaying. That motion carries. Uh, we will be removing this, I'm sorry, the sixteen hundred from the original balance. Now may I have a motion to approve the new motion to, for the transfers, payrolls, accounts payable. In the amount of.
So, uh, you want to amend?
No, you've amended already.
I mean.
So now you want to approve?
I want to approve the new total for the, uh, accounts payable.
For?
For six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent of notice, trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seth.
No.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Motion carries. There are no presentations, we can skip B and C and go to six A, the mayor's report. And even though they are not here, I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint a finance director, Mr. Freddie McNoone. May I have a motion? Submove. May I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent of notice, trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Seth. Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Okay, that motion failed. However, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce, I'm not introduced because they're not here, but to appoint Freddie McNoone as the interim finance director. May I have a motion to appoint a public works director, Adam Renicki? Submove. May I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent of notice, trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Seth.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion fails. At this point in time, I exercise executive right to appoint an interim public works director, Adam Renicki. Moving on, I want to compliment the fire department for a wonderful event that was done, a wow back, but then also the training and the amount of information that you're providing on social media. I, I think our residents really appreciate knowing what you're doing, how you're doing it, and I thank you very much. I don't want to steal the thunder of our police chief, but I'm going to ask that each one of you make certain that you grab the flyer that's on the back table that talks about the trick-or-treat hours. This way, whether you have children or not of your own that you're out with, at least you would know what time it's okay for you to shut off your lights if trick-or-treat hours are over at seven o'clock. If you are participating and you're giving the youngsters, and I can't say little babies because I get teenagers at my home. If you're giving away trick-or-treat, trick-or-treats, then that, those hours are three PM to seven PM. Okay? Just so that you know. Um, I did something different this time that I've not done, but I will be doing this along with the other directors and administrators. And that is to give a written report. And it's not for me to read through each one of them because I, I know that you can read yourself. But I gave you administrative updates that look at activities that I've done, reports that's been completed, meetings that I've attended. I talked to you about legislative and policy matters and, um, what we're doing. Where legislation and policy is concerned. Community engagement, and I see under A, I said attended, and I didn't put anything else there. But know that we are preparing for the annual holiday parade. Thanks to trustee Winston, we were awarded a, win a grant. When I did this report, it hadn't been reported that we won the grant. But now, we just have a little bit of money so that we can buy LED lights and to decorate our outside. What we're going to do for the inside people, I have absolutely no idea because the majority of the Christmas decorations from before are gone. So you retired the reindeer? The reindeer. Oh, no, I'm talking about the lights for the village hall and, uh, the baton. No, those material, things like that are usually kept at public works. So they would have, are you ready for them to be retired? I thought last year what we did was, I thought that we switched with Stagger. And I thought we had Stagger's outdoor decorations and they had ours. I don't remember, but that's what I thought. But you know, I'm talking about for inside the building. We have very limited decorations, so what and how we're going to do it, I'm not certain. But we don't need someone to help erect a tree in the lobby there because we still have that. Just read through, do you have any questions? Let me know, but we are in the process of submitting another application to come in. And, um, and that's for sustainable energy. So we're just, we're trying to move ahead to the greatest extent possible, to the greatest extent. to the greatest extent possible, regardless of how and what I'm accused of. We're still moving forward, we're going to still move forward. I purposely did not give a report on our infrastructure and all of that because Robinson Engineer will be giving that report, and I don't want the redundancy. But you're going to be able to see. After you listen to each one of these directors and chiefs' reports, you're going to see that we are moving forward in spite of. It would be wonderful for us all move forward in that unity that I so strive for. But I can't control anyone other than myself, and I know that. But I definitely would love to see us embrace the positive things that you're going to be hearing in their reports today and focus on so, so much of the positive and the growth than just dwelling in the sublime and ridiculous. Okay, that's my report.
That's very rude.
That's okay.
I took it as being offensive.
Excuse me, would you like to be escorted out?
Either way.
It's your decision. It's your decision, you can really maintain your decorum, you have a choice.
Yep, make sure everybody over there have a choice too, because they talk.
Oh, Jesus Christ, you see what I'm saying? Let's move on to hear some of the other wonderful things that's being done. Village clerk, can you give your report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to give kudos to the library and the wonderful, wonderful trick-or-treat this weekend. Um, thank you for the fire department, the police department, the mayor, the trustees who participated. It was a record crowd of over two hundred and fifty kids. And it's always a great event, and I speak for the library because I was a library board member for thirteen years, and I hold the library in my heart. So thank you for such a wonderful event and everybody's participation. I am looking forward to attending the Halloween dance party on Friday because I, for one, am looking for unity. And just like you all participated in our event, I will be participating in your event and every future event that everybody in Sawville told, I will be a part of that as I always have been. And also, the, uh, Halloween house decorating contest is canceled due to lack of participation. Unfortunately, I came out with that way too late, but look out for Christmas, I've got plenty of time. Start watching your Christmas houses that are decorated because we're gonna have some great prizes, and we're gonna have some great nominations because people go all off to Christmas. And finally, thank you, Ms. Anderson, for bringing up the minutes. And the other records that I still do not have in my office, the clerk's files have been missing out of my office for six months. I went and retrieved them myself and they were taken back out and locked up in storage. And when I asked for them again, I was told there's personal items mixed up with the village items, so I can't retrieve my village items, most of which are extremely important. I implore the residents to email, write, come and visit the mayor, whatever you need to do, and let her know the village clerk needs her documents in her office, not locked up in storage. Please, personal items should have been removed before she took office, the law states five days. The law states you have five days to put that office in order for the person that's coming in. I beg, I beg, bring me my files, please, thank you.
Typically, I don't, I don't do the counter responses, but I'm going to because we keep beating this course down the street, and we don't need it to be crippled. Know that I was given little or no time to transition from the clerk's office to the mayor's office. So therefore, I put the items in the conference room. Okay?
Sixty months ago.
And, excuse me.
Sixty months ago.
Excuse me. And the current clerk took it upon herself to go into the conference room and remove everything out of there and move them into her office. Some of those items were my personal items. You guys saw a lot of that stuff on Facebook because the pictures were posted, the baskets. In the baskets were personal stuff that was out of the desk. Wouldn't go in a box, so I put them in baskets. You saw those pictures, you saw the pictures. But that still doesn't give anyone the right to go and remove items that I had secured in a conference room to move it to that one. I'm only saying that because this is like the third or fourth time that I've heard it over the last three or four days. And I think that at some point in time, someone needs to know the truth. And when the items were removed from her office, we had staff in attendance as well as our police in attendance. So they witnessed what we did. They are secure, and if I could spend less time with responding back to emails after emails after emails and bluff, then I would have more time to direct myself to records. The clerk claims that she can't do her job without the records. Let me share something with you. When I was the clerk, I always was taking notes. And I had a sheet that when they voted, I marked what and how they voted. That's not a part of public records. That's a lot of what's in this room over here. Things that needs to be tossed, that is not impeding anybody's job at this moment. Now, I've said it, and I am.
Point of information.
No, I'm going to. I'm going to move on. There is no point of information being.
Point of information.
I am going to.
Point of information.
Attorney counsel.
Can you please, uh, rectify this?
Corporate, no.
A trustee called for point of information.
I'm giving you an opportunity to make.
I'm going to recognize the point of information. Everything stops when someone on the board calls for point of information. Attorney, am I right?
Good evening, everybody. Um, I, I think you should address the point of information.
Thank you.
What is the point of information? Usually, if you're asking a question when you ask for point of information.
Ask the question. I know my stuff. So you cannot rush me to ask the question.
And then you guys wonder why we're here so long. Come on now.
This is concerning the clerk's information that she's asking. So when will the village be able to recover our records to the clerk's office?
Thank you for asking.
Can she have a timeframe? Because for one, the clerk has to answer FOIA requests due to our records. It's based on our village records. So if she gets a FOIA request, how do we expect our village clerk to answer that FOIA request without?
I can't deal with hypotheticals, but know that.
So my question.
I'm answering your question.
Point of information again. When will the village clerk receive our village records? Can we have a timeframe, please, and thank you?
As soon as possible.
Thank you. Do you have a timeframe? Soon as possible.
I don't have a timeframe.
For this board.
Okay, that's okay, it may be unacceptable, but I don't have a timeframe to give you with this point.
Okay, well, then you're forcing the board to have to intervene, Mayor, and report you because we can't sit there and allow.
You need to do.
You to hold on to the village records and not turn them over to our village clerk. It's not all about you.
Did you do that, Derek Burgess? I mean, think about the last allegations that we had on September the twenty-fifth. Well, I'm just saying, give me the same.
Please control yourself. I asked you. A point.
Attorney, please.
A straight information. What can you tell us? How long would it take you?
Okay.
How long would it take you? Do you need a month? Do you need two weeks?
So, uh, corporate counsel, we do not have an official report. However, since this is my first time with the village, I did want to personally introduce myself. Uh, my name is Attorney Attorney. I am the senior attorney with our village corporate counsel, Mr. Frasier and Vert. Uh, I've been recently assigned at Saw Village, so I certainly look forward to working with you all on the board. I've been an attorney for over two years, I've been on the board, I've been on the other side of it, so I certainly understand kind of everything. And I, I certainly plan to, uh, try to guide the board so that we can kind of move the city forward. Because when I was assigned to, to be seats, it's more than just being your city attorney. I want to be involved with the community, well, seeing me at these things and events given to, you know, various things. Uh, because I think it's important that everybody in the Southland kind of pushes our city forward, um, from the Southland. So it's very personal to me, I thank you all, and I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, sir. Uh, village engineer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, ma'am, for order of trustees.
I'm sorry, one moment, please. Are you leaving as well? Okay, unfortunately, and I don't even have to call, adjourn the meeting. We have no choice but to adjourn the meeting because we've lost our quorum. But those of you who have been here, department heads, who've been here since seven o'clock waiting to do your reports, I apologize. I apologize, and truly apologize, okay? Have a good night, everyone.